I'd like to call the regular meeting of March tenth, 2014, to order at six fifty-three P. M. Could I have roll call, please? Mr. Kuderek.
Present.
Ms. Bowles.
Here.
Ms. Kraut.
Here.
Mr. Thede.
Present.
Ms. Funderburke.
Here.
Ms. Beer, Ms. Buckley is here. Stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if there's anybody in the portion of our meeting as far as for communications and expressions of the public and would like to address the board, there are forms at the back table that you can fill out and then pass them up to our secretary and so we'll have, and we'll call upon you at that portion of our meeting. I also need to amend our agenda. I'd like to add an item between questions and concerns of board members and adjournment. I'd like to add a closed session for student hearing.
Madam Chair, I move that we add closed session to the agenda as, actually it would be item number ten and then adjournment would be eleven.
Those ten to eleven?
Yep.
Support. I have a motion by Mrs. Funderburke, supported by Mrs. Buckley, to amend the agenda and add the closed session as item ten for student hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Seven zero. The next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature by the Board of Education and will be acted upon by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items. If any member of the board or any citizen requests discussion out of an item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will become the first item of business under the report of the superintendent portion of the agenda. Item A, approval to approve the minutes of the Board of Education for the regular meeting of February twenty-fourth, 2014. B, approval to approve the personnel actions as submitted by Rebecca Peck, Director of Human Resources. Employment of a math teacher at Community High School, an ELA teacher at Romulus High School, a resignation of an ELA teacher at Ramus Middle School, a resignation of a fifth grade teacher at Wick Elementary, leave of absence of a kindergarten teacher at Ram Al, effective March twenty-eight, 2014. That's in regards to the leave of absence, sorry. Item C, approval to approve the bills for payment as submitted by Anna Bocedes in the amount of two million, six hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred fifty-eight dollars and twenty cents. Item D, approval to approve the proposed field trip to the University of Toledo on April tenth, 2014, for the Ramus High School junior class and accepted seniors at no cost to the district. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Motion made by Mrs. Kraut, supported by Mrs. I'm sorry, motion made by Mrs. Funderburke, supported by Mrs. Kraut. All in favor?
Discussion?
Discussion.
I would just like to say that University of Toledo is paying for all the expenses for the kids go down there and to view the campus and to get that exposure to the college. And it's just, to me, that's great.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, again, we have a motion by Mrs. Funderburke and supported by Mrs. Kraut. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries seven zero. The next item on our agenda is the middle school presentation.
Our healthy communities, so we welcome Mr. Sahini and Ms. Kubany to do the presentation and all the rest of the students with you.
Today, I'm just gonna announce, we have a grant that we applied for last year that we received called In Building Healthy Communities, and they've put together a presentation not only for the, with the students, but also from our coordinator, Courtney, Mr. Halesko, Mrs. Kubany are champions and cheerleaders, and then we have two students here to speak today, so I'm just gonna turn it right over to them.
Can we get him, Teresa?
Hi, my name is Courtney Bose, and I'm a health educator with Project Healthy Schools at the University of Michigan. So, last spring, Romulus Middle School applied for the Building Healthy Communities, Project Healthy Schools program, and they were awarded that grant last spring. It's a partnership between OS, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Wayne State University, the Michigan Fitness Foundation, and the United Dairy Industry. It's a three-year program in which we're focusing on physical activity and nutrition at Romulus Middle School, focusing on education with the sixth-grade students, and creating a supportive environment with the seventh and eighth-grade students. So, our program is ten years old, we're celebrating our tenth birthday, we started in two thousand and four as a collaborative with the University of Michigan, and it's designed to increase physical activity and create healthier food options for students to help reduce childhood obesity and long-term cardiovascular risk factors. We target the transition grade into middle school when students are developing more autonomy, and currently, we are in forty-one schools and have reached over eighteen thousand schools, and that actually is about to get bumped to about twenty-three thousand, so. Here's a list of all of our partner schools, several of our schools we work with in coordination with other organizations such as the Memorial Fit Foundation in Flint, Beaumont Health System in Royal Oak and Troy, and the Greater Flint Health Coalition in the Grand Blank area. So, we have five goals that we focus on, eat more fruits and vegetables, make better beverage choices, be active every day, eat less fast and fatty foods, and spend less time in front of a screen, especially mindless time in front of a screen, and that is what all of our curriculum and environmental changes focus on. And here are all the different components of things that we work on, so we have a kickoff for our program that the girls will talk about, we do educational activities, we have a healthy habits challenge, an end-of-the-year physical activity event, we partner with food services, we have bulletin boards in the building, we work to communicate with the staff and the families through emails, and media sent homes, going to parent-teacher conferences and stuff like that. We have our two wellness champions that Mrs. Kubany and Mr. Halesko fill and help to implement our program at Romulus Middle School. We do sometimes work to do after-school programs, and then we do do measurement on our programs for quality and quantity purposes.
As she said, we do have a committee, it's the Wellness Committee, and we do have partnership with our leadership group, and currently, our leadership group is leading the charge for the month of, well, February they did, in helping our kids make healthy food choices and being active during the lunchtime, they had taste tests, they had activity challenges that the kids could participate in. They also provided daily health tips for our students throughout the month of, excuse me, February and a little bit of March. And we have two of our representatives from the leadership team that also serve on our wellness team and attend our meetings during our months, and I have Marissa and Kyra.
You can move that microphone down a little bit. You can actually take it out of the holder if you need to.
Okay, today I'm going to be talking about the Fuel Up to Play Sixty. Fuel Up to Play Sixty is a program founded by the National Dairy Council and NFL in collaboration with USDA that empowers students to take charge in making small, everyday changes at school. Students can win cool prizes with, like, an NFL player visit or Super Bowl tickets for choosing good for your foods and getting active for at least sixty minutes every day. We want kids to make a difference not only to their lives, but also their community. Leadership did a video and also did prizes during lunch.
We had a kickoff for Fuel Up to Play Sixty and Project Healthy Schools, and leadership was incorporated into the kickoff, and we did have this on the website, I believe, so we won't see the whole thing, but maybe we'll see Mr. Sahini.
Oh, no. Can I get your autograph now before you go public? I've seen you play football.
You know what? The microphone.
Microphone on the speaker. Steve's back there in the back.
You're not hearing the audio from the computer. We have, we're having technical issues.
I don't think they're plugged in.
We're having technical difficulties.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Don't forget to sign up and remember to exercise safety nets a day. Let's look at some clips from the assembly.
(laughing).
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 (laughing).[829.18]
Can donate and maybe even have guys out that day do stuff, too.
Absolutely, okay.
Yeah, get with me.
Thank you.
Good job.
Great job.
Okay, the next item on our agenda for tonight is superintendent's items of interest.
And the first item of interest is the best practice resolution that we need from the board tonight so that we can receive the funding for our best practices.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Kudrick.
I move the Board of Education adopt the best practice resolution as recommended by the interim superintendent. And by doing this, we actually will get fifty-two dollars more per student from the state because we've met seven out of the eight best practices, so.
Support. And who was the support, I'm sorry, the support was?
Sandy.
Sandy, Tom and Sandy. I have a motion by Mr. Kudrick, supported by Mrs. Kraut. Any more discussion?
Do we need to read the resolution?
They did.
The resolution is a resolution.
I can read the resolution and then we can do the vote.
The one on the back.
The school board resolution for the best practices incentive is whereas section twenty-two F of the school, the State School Aid Act provides fifty-two dollars per pupil one-time grants to districts that satisfy at least seven of eight best practices criteria not later than June first of two thousand and fourteen. Whereas the Board of Education of Romulus Community Schools desires to receive the fifty-two dollars per pupil incentive payment, whereas the Romulus Community School District has satisfied at least eight of the eight best practices criteria. Whereas eligibility for the incentive payment is contingent upon adopting a resolution that states the district has complied with the following eight of eight best practice criteria. Now therefore be it resolved as follows. The Board of Education of Romulus Community Schools certifies that the district has complied with the following requirements. The district is a designated policy holder for medical benefit plans pursuant to section twenty-two F two A. The district has obtained a competitive bid in non-instructional services pursuant to section twenty-two F two B for transportation, custodial maintenance and food service. The district accepts applications for enrollment by non-resident applicants under section one oh five or one oh five C, MCL three eight eight point one seven oh five pursuant to section twenty-two F two C. The district monitors individual pupil academic growth in each subject area at least twice during the school year using competency-based online assessments pursuant to section twenty-two F two D and reports the results to the pupil and his or her parent or guardian. The district supports opportunities for pupils to receive post-secondary credit while attending secondary school pursuant to section twenty-two F two E. The district offers online courses or blended learning opportunities to all eligible pupils and publish course syllabi pursuant to section twenty-two F two F. The district provides a link on the district's homepage to the URL for the My School Data Portal which will contain the required dashboard indicators pursuant to section twenty-two F two G. If certain data elements for our district aren't available from state data collections, we agree to provide those data in the form and manner determined by MDE, which is Michigan Department of Education. The district provides physical education and healthy education pursuant to section twenty-two F two H. And then item two, number two, the Board of Education of Romulus Community Schools authorizes and directs its secretary to file this resolution with the State Aid and School Financing Office of the Michigan Department of Education. All resolutions and parts of resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution are hereby rescinded, resolved this tenth day of March two thousand and fourteen. And then?
I gotta do a roll call.
We need a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kudrick?
Yes.
Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Ms. Kraut?
Yes.
Mr. Thede?
Yes.
Ms. Fundenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Beard?
Yes.
Ms. Buckle, votes yes.
Well, it should pass a seven zero.
The next item under the superintendent's is enrollment. And Ms. Peck's gonna fill us in on our enrollment for this year.
So I have good news to report. You have before you two charts. One of them is the FTE enrollment trend analysis current for two thousand and thirteen fourteen. Looks like this. And the other one is a big chart that is entitled Fall to Winter Enrollment Analysis. We are up from our fall count thirty-six point nine FTE. That is a trend that has been reversed. I want to refer to the second chart, the Fall to Winter Enrollment Analysis. We had been in a negative enrollment from fall to winter, starting in two thousand and seven, eight, all the way through two thousand and eleven, twelve. Last year we broke the trend and we had more students in the winter than we did in the fall. We had nine point two nine more students. And this year we have thirty-six point nine more students than we did in the fall. So this is a very positive trend. We expect to see this trend also continue in our fall count.
Madam Chair. Yeah, I got a question, if you don't mind. What do you use, what number are you using for your baseline? You say we're over, I mean, are you just?
Zero.
So whatever we had in the fall, that's what you're comparing it to, right?
Yes.
For them years, okay.
Yep. So our certified fall count to our certified winter count.
Okay, gotcha.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Go ahead, Ms. Fundenberg. How much of this peak is attributed to our Inkster students?
Um, you know, our fall, our fall enrollment was significantly impacted by our Inkster students. This winter enrollment is, it's students across the board. It's Romulus residents coming back, it's Inkster residents that maybe they started in a different school and then they came to us.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's a, I would consider this trend to be something that we would look for in the fall, not having that Inkster blip in there, if you will.
Okay.
For increasing in our enrollment. And as you can see from this chart, you know, it's been a long, it's been a long ride to get to here. I mean, I'm showing it to the audience right now, you know, this number down here is below the zero point. It took us to last year to get to the point where we have more kids in the winter than we did in the fall. So we were still losing kids in the fall. That trend has been reversed. And two years in, I can, I can say to you, last year I didn't say to you the trend was reversed. Last year I said, here's what the data shows, let's see what happens next year. So I'm very happy to report to the board that it appears that this is a trend.
Ms. Peck, do you think our public relations campaign has anything to do with?
Um.
Partly responsible for this?
You know, the PR campaign and Superintendent McInally will go into more detail about our progress on that. I can't attribute this, that, that to this. I attribute this to the great services that we offer Romulus, Romulus residents and students that come to Romulus. The word's getting out, we are the best kept secret and I don't think that we're a secret anymore. I think that people are finding out through our website, they're finding out through word of mouth. Parents are, are being very vocal that Romulus has a lot to offer. You should, you should bring your student there, your child there.
The next item on the agenda is MASBA recognition awards. And we have several board members that will be receiving physical awards in, um. Is it April tenth or April?
Usually, usually April.
Yeah, April twenty-third. So make sure you get with Ms. Osiris to sign up for that if you'd like to go. But we have, um, Ms. Kraut, you will be receiving one for achieving the award of merit, so congratulations. And Danielle Fundenberg for achieving the Master Board Member Award, congratulations. John Thede for achieving the Award of Distinction, congratulations. And then we have one for Robert McLaughlin for achieving the Advocacy Skills Specialty in the Day by Specialty Certificate. So congratulations to all of you. We had one board member that ran into problems of getting all of the classes in and, um, but it still can help so that our board can get the school board recognition. It wasn't, it wasn't anybody's fault, it was because the class was canceled and time expired on that, so, um, working out ways to get that one done. So congratulations to everybody, that should be a fun night on April twenty-third. Let Ms. Osiris know.
Madam Chair, and is it at Lincoln Park?
Yes.
Yes.
April twentieth, the deadline is April twenty-third to register. The event date is on May first, two thousand and fourteen.
May first? May first?
Yes, May first. At six P M. at Lincoln Park High School.
Yep.
Okay, the next item is a video from Decision Day. I don't know if you've seen it out there on the website, but it's been out there on the website. And it's the MCAN, the Michigan College Access Network. They used our seniors last year to create this video. And Ms. Fundenberg, do you probably have more to add to the MCAN?
Sure. Okay, so MCAN is our Michigan College Access Network and Project ACE is our local college access network. And we've partnered with them. And we were chosen, Romulus High School was chosen to actually do the kickoff video for College Decision Day, which is something that is shown across the state of Michigan. And so this was a really big thumbs up for Romulus High School that we actually got chosen. And we're, we're the poster child, so to speak, for Decision Day. And what Decision Day is, it's, it's a celebration of the children who have chosen post-secondary opportunities. And it's just kind of giving them a pat on the back and an opportunity to say, look at what we've done. You know, this is where we're going and just the, just the time to shine. And so this is a video really kind of explaining what that is about.
I went to different websites like College Navigator, looked up how big their classes were, how many students they had, what their diversity was, and I think they had my major report. Every college has its own brand, every college has their own personality for things, just like we do. So if you're more of a small town kind of person, you may go for a smaller college. If you're more of a big city person, you may want a college that's larger.
Because you spend the next four years or six if you graduate from school in that same university. So excuse me, you need to make sure you find the right fit for it, a place where you feel like it's home.
Decision Day across college admissions, May first is the day that you have to return your intention roll amongst your deposit. This holds your spot at whatever university that you're gonna go to. We want to celebrate that decision. We want to celebrate wherever you're going.
Wayne Bradley, he's from Wayne County Community College.
It is definitely one of those, those life-changing decisions. It's one that can, you know, broaden your horizons on how you use the planet, the world.
I did a lot of research and visited campus and I asked people, how do you like it, would you recommend it for a very social person? They had all the votes that I wanted.
Well, it's easy, you know, it's the thing you're supposed to. You know, you go to high school, you graduate from high school, the next step is to go to college. And you graduate with a college.
It feels amazing. I'm so excited and I'm just proud to say that I'm going to college and I'm gonna do better for myself.
Seniors, mark your calendars for Decision Day on May first. Visit knowhowto.com Michigan dot org to know the steps to college.
I'd just like to add that last year, I assisted Danielle in attending the Decision Day that Mrs. Gordon set up at the high school last year. It was really something else to see all the kids line up and claim the colleges that they were going to. And they're, they're, they're going everywhere. They're going out of state, they're, they're in-state, they're, the numbers of kids, even if it was just community college or trade school, they were, they were recognized and given their certificate for at least, you know, making the decision to, to go to college. It was pretty impressive.
And they were excited about it as well. And it's hard to excite teenagers about, you know, some things, so it was pretty cool. They enjoyed it.
Thank you for your involvement, Ms. Fundenberg. Thank you. The next item is the Budget and the DEP Amendment. We need to schedule a special meeting so Mr. Dixon can be here. And I tried to get the seventeenth, which we already had penciled in on our calendar for the goals meeting, but he's not available. So could we look at our calendar and see if the nineteenth will fit into your schedule? Because I know he's leaving on a, out of town for then like the next two weeks. And I'd like for him to present the budget before the board.
What date is that? What day is that?
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
I'm not available.
I'm not available on that day either.
Not even if you started at five o'clock.
Yeah.
What other day can we do with the availability? Do we have an alternate day?
What about the twentieth?
Not available on the twentieth either.
We got, we've got.
So is it any day that week?
The seventeenth is what I had blocked off for a meeting already.
But he's not.
The seventeenth was on a study session.
Right. It's a study session.
Do you want me to just give him a call? Tell him something and see if maybe he could change some things around, maybe? I do need to change some things around.
He's not available.
See, that's a right. I'm gonna have Ms. Peck call him just to check to see if he could change something because I know that we can't go out any further unless we want to move it to, um.
Earlier?
Like mid-April.
That's a good idea.
And I don't think that's wise at all. But let's, I'll have her check to see if she can, he can rearrange his schedule for March seventeenth. She'll be back with us in a second or two. Okay?
Tell him if he shows up, we'll give him his check.
Yeah, that'll get, that'll.
That'll give him his, I think.
So as she's calling and making connections, we'll move to the next one, the Energy Bond RFP. The directive was, from the board's direction was to go ahead with the RFP and put it out for bid. But then it came back that Ms. Peck and I were sitting there going, wait, we need somebody and it cannot be us to oversee this project. And it was like we were moving the wheels, doing the RFP, and then let's just say ABM decided to bid on it and they got the award, the bid, and we decided that we wanted to do this and move forward with it. Her concern and my concern is who's gonna oversee this for us to make sure that we're not getting secondary lighting put in with our money or chillers that are non-of quality? I don't have experience with chillers or lights or any of that, except that I know it goes in, you screw it and it lights up. But I would never say that I was an expert in that area and I don't think, Ms. Peck feels like an expert in that area. So we wanted to come back to you and see your ideas, your thoughts of this. I just want to tell you that we have to move forward with some sort of energy savings because right now J L is killing us with repairs and it's not their fault, it's because of where our equipment is now at its current time. Our reality is, um, you look at the, you look at the bills every month that we put out for heating. This winter was a crazy winter, but you can go back years. So our energy bills and the maintenance, they're gonna increase as time goes on. We're gonna be charged more for our maintenance fee for the equipment that we currently own. Freon, I was just speaking to somebody today, the freon for our chillers, they said will probably cost more than gold. And I said, no.
They don't make it anymore.
Right, it's not made that will serve us our, our chillers right now currently.
You can't put one, two, three in with the freon, you gotta have it drained.
So is that, that's correct information because?
Yes.
They said it's out.
My, my question for you, though, Superintendent here, is we, we could still send out the RFP to get bids committed. And what you're asking for is if we can get somebody within the district to oversee the project, is what you're looking, to kind of monitor the inflammation of it, is what you're looking for?
I don't even know if we have anybody, say, in the district that would.
But I mean, we're looking to bring somebody in to oversee this project for the, the creation of the project, for the time period that RFP would cover. So basically, five months, probably, five, six months roughly.
Or whatever it would take, a project manager.
A project manager. That's gonna work on behalf of Romulus Community Schools and whatever vendor we choose to go with as a result of the RFP. First, we have to have somebody help us review the RFPs because we're not quite sure which one would be the best one. So we'd want somebody that, that works for us to oversee the RFP process, make the recommendations, and then when we do go forward, they oversee that, those punch lists. They oversee, okay, are you forty percent done with the work before we cut the check? They're gonna know because they're experts in the field. So, so.
And it goes back to quality, too, that are we getting what they said we were getting?
Right, to ensure that we're getting the proper. Makes sense. They're not gonna be outdated in ten years.
So then my next thing is that Rebecca and I have spoken a lot about this. ABM, do you know what? They put a lot of time in and monitoring, evaluating our energy costs. And what they presented to us was their prediction of what we could save and become savings neutral so that we would not spend any more money. That was all upfront that they put out there. There were monitors in my, my office back there this week, so they're still collecting the data, you know, to show the savings that would occur. Final line is, no matter, if we do nothing, our energy costs are gonna soar, just like they have been. Costs for repairs and fixes are going to continue to go snowballing. It's sort of like my old van out there that you're starting to rust at the bottom, you put a patch on it, it's still rusty. But, um, we wanna know when we move forward, how are we going to do this?
My, my question for you is, what, what are you proposing? Are you proposing to bring an individual to oversee this or are you proposing to go with a company to kind of, like say, let's, for example, if the ABC company comes in and they have a personal project manager that can do it? What, what are you proposing? A company or have an individual? Maybe a retiree or maybe somebody that's experienced in that to work for a six-month period, you know?
You know me, I wanna go the cheapest route where we can save some money here, but.
Cheapest route is have John do the fire system. I can do the sanitation, but he can change the light bulb, we'll go with that way.
But we know that wouldn't be the wise one.
But.
Have you talked to like other districts to see what they do in these circumstances?
I have. I, I've spoken to Southgate and they used ABM and the superintendent was the one that was the project manager. But he came from.
That was his background.
But the situation we're in, I think that would probably be a silly thing to do because with the superintendent, we gotta have somebody that's gonna be here for the whole project. We're not sure if that, you know, if.
And I don't want us to go and do this if we don't have somebody to watch our backs.
When do we have to have this information to you or an idea? When do you need it?
I just think we want general discussion so that we can either move forward with the RFP and say, in that RFP, we want to put the money also for the contractor or whoever.
Which way, which way are you preferring to go? Are you, have you got any quotes from like, say like Barton Mallow or anything like that?
I have not done any of that because I wanted to see what the board.
Can we possibly maybe give a quote from maybe a couple contractors, maybe, you know, a retiree that's maybe experienced and send it to the board and tell us which way would be the best? But, I mean, just to oversee it? For somebody overseeing, I don't think it's gonna take, at the beginning, I don't think it's gonna take hundreds of hours, but maybe towards the project inflammation during the summer, you might be looking at, you know, twenty, thirty hours a week, maybe coming in to make sure that the project's getting done and then by about November, they're done. Because that's when winter's gonna be hitting in.
Well, ABM supplementation was supposed to be totally done by August, correct?
With the major installation.
Major. The heating units couldn't be done until after it started getting cold so they could get them tweaked and adjusted.
Right.
But the inflammation of all the equipment, majority of it'll all be through the summer. So maybe there's somebody in the community that's a mechanical engineer that possibly be looking for a part-time job that's retired for a couple months or something like that. Maybe that's an option.
We can check for some quotes and just.
Yeah, let's, you know, let us know which way the best.
If it can be rolled into the RFP.
Do we still have, are we still under contract with Barton Mallow?
No.
No, we, okay. Cause I know, yeah, I know we, yeah.
We're not with them anymore, they quit a couple, by the year.
They would've, would've done something in that capacity.
They have project management. I mean, they've done project management before.
You're the one that changed them at school all the time.
But, um, they have the capacity to do it, as do other companies.
Okay.
But listen, you know, let's get a, you know, a couple.
And if you guys know of any retired project managers or somebody that.
Somebody that's got some experience.
Just, um.
You know, it's heating, cooling, lighting and all of that stuff because we're not experts.
Does Wayne Risa have anybody in that?
Well, we have a call into their, their facilities department to see if that's an area. They, they already told us that they can't provide us with a project manager, but they might be able to lead us towards some qualified individuals, you know, if we can kind of give them the scope of the project.
Anna, who was the one maintenance guy that retired that did a lot of the maintenance work throughout the buildings? I mean.
Leo Graybus?
No, 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 that's Leo. The one before that.
Don Matheny.
Yeah, Matheny? That might be an option or something, maybe. Or if they've got that kind of, you know, if he's got that background, knows the district, somebody like that.
So are you needing permission to start investigating that? Is that what you're asking us tonight?
You know what? I guess not so much permission, I just wanted you guys to be informed. Those are our feelings and that we might have to roll that into the RFP.
And if the board wasn't interested in that, then we wouldn't move any, any further forward with it. I mean, we sat down and looked at the RFP itself and we're not qualified to even judge whether this is a good RFP. We would want somebody with some expertise to look this over for us and.
You're right.
Staying in your lane.
Right.
Well, it's better to bring him up now until after, you know, instead of.
So you guys will things, get us some quotes or?
Get us some quotes, maybe next meeting we can make him, you know, a move to which way we wanna go. What about, uh?
If we have him by then.
Extend a call to Bob McCray with the city in the building department? Cause they have all the heating and cooling, electrical people over there, get it.
Sharing services.
Yeah.
Sharing services.
Yep.
Intergovernmental agreement.
Agreement.
Could be. Somebody looking out for her. Help, somebody, you know, at least help us get it started and then maybe they can recommend somebody that could.
Right, they might know a great project manager that has experience in all of this that.
Or like I said, there are people could help out, too, because. Like I said, maybe there's a retiree out there that wants to just work a few months and that's it, you know? I'm sure you have to pull permission to do those things anyways. Great.
We're gonna keep it as the seventeenth for, um.
The special meeting.
But it won't be the goals and that, it'll be for Mr. Dixon and the budget.
What time? We had five thirty.
We had it set at five thirty.
Let's keep, is that final?
Why don't we try, if we got time, let's try to do the goals afterwards?
Yeah, I'm, I'm with time, I'm glad you brought that up.
I mean, you know, we may be able to get through the budget relatively quick. If it's drawn out, then we'll just push the goals back to the next one. So what time we starting on?
Five thirty.
The next item on our agenda tonight is Marie Miller is here from MASB to talk to us about the superintendent search and also to answer any questions that we had in regards to the discussion that we had about the last meeting and extending the interim superintendent's contract. We also need to let her know if this is the route that we're going to go or if we're gonna continue with the search and set our timelines.
Good evening. It's been a little while. Glad to be back. And I apologize if I'm back, if anybody, uh, the, I shared with the board, I believe all of you received some documents. The, I shared with the board, I believe all of you received some documents from me. One should be the survey results and with.
Sorry.
Survey results with that survey, there were 42 participants and the board has that information. I also shared with the board members basically the report from the community meeting, the two community, staff, community meetings. We had 10 participants there. And then I also shared the compilation of the profiles that were submitted by, by the board. Didn't have all of those submitted, but we did have four. So those represent the opinions of, of the collective opinion of four board members. The interesting thing is that for the most part, there was very little difference from this search to a year previous in terms of the things that the community members that were present were concerned about. It's still same, same track. And also still pretty much the same track in terms of the, what they desire in a superintendent. If you want me to go in more detail about that, I can.
Could you please, we have guests in the audience who haven't really been part of some of the previous meetings. So we could kind of rehash as much as possible. Thank you.
And I'll hit the high points. One of the concerns overwhelmingly is the need for better communication. And that was the concern of the board as we discussed how you're going to get the information out. And they pretty much echoed the conversation that was held at the board meeting that with a lack of, you know, newspaper, not everybody having the access to the computers, how are they going to get information home? I know that there were plans to get flyers out in home. Some of the people who were at the meeting said they did not get the flyers and they wanted that shared with you. So, and they did get the robocall and they said that was helpful. But perhaps the next time a, the robocall a few, you know, a little earlier than the day before. So, but they did recognize that the board is trying and they felt that there was more communication, that the communication has improved since, you know, a year ago. So, and I, I know it's difficult and applaud you and, you know, but it's something that we need to keep cognizant of as we move along in whatever direction the board chooses to move. Some of the best qualities of the district were the fact that it's community values. I think the comment was made about being a best kept secret. That was also, that came out at the meetings. Small town feeling where everyone knows each other, even though it is not really a small town. Multi-generational, many staff are graduates of Romulus and continue to live here. Diverse community and schools and that there is a pride in, in the city and in the schools. Most critical issues came out to be bullying and discipline, especially at the middle and high school. Budget and financial issues considerations, looking to the standards of achievement, the need to follow policies consistently, increasing costs, accountability, and again, a critical issue that the board and superintendent must work together as a team. Some of the most important skills and competencies and duties of the superintendent is overall about the fact of having experience. There, you know, some people thought experience as a superintendent, central office experience, finance background, strategic planning and able to articulate a vision. We had a long discussion, the one meeting went, the second, the evening meeting went probably almost two hours, I believe. A little over that maybe by the last, the time the last person left. And talked very clearly about the vision, being able to articulate the vision and getting everybody aboard on the vision. And to take it from a vision to an action plan. So that's basically what the community members that were there, again, small group, very vocal, very passionate. An experienced administrator with a positive track record, organizational skills and detail oriented, strong ethics and integrity. Spoke quite intensely about a vested interest in the district and a willingness to stay. An effective communicator, active and visible in schools and community, proactive rather than reactive. Someone who had, who could maintain good relations with both board and community. Decision-making skills. They definitely wanted someone that had teaching experience. And they want a superintendent who follows up, returns phone calls, can make change and follow through. And someone who can demonstrate the ability to get groups to work together. There's also quite a bit of discussion about transparency and also having someone who understood and was able to work in a diverse community. And they basically, you know, want to assure the board that they have, that you have their confidence. But they want you to make sure that you make the best possible choice for a superintendent and that you don't settle. And so that was the term. A lot of pride, a lot of concern, wanting to move forward. I've heard positive things. They talked about the early college program. In fact, there were a couple of parents there who said they brought their children back because of the early college program. So from that perspective, they want to continue the good things. They know that it's, you know, it's going to be difficult out there with the increased costs. But they recognize the work of the board and appreciate that. But they want a little bit more from everybody. The online survey was a little more detailed in terms of asking for some information in terms of what position the people were, whether they were community members, staff members or both community and staff. And 40 out of the 42 answered that. And the majority of the responses came from community members. But again, it was a pretty close split between community and staff. And those responses pretty well echoed what, you know, I've shared that came out in the meetings. Now, I'm going to be perfectly honest, it could be the same people at the meetings could have responded to these. And it's 40 responses. I don't think it's highly likely that one person responded 40 times. But, you know, you can't guarantee, very honestly, there's no way to guarantee that, you know, it doesn't lock you out after one response. Just to be realistic and to be transparent. But I believe that the comments probably are the more helpful piece for the board, for the superintendent to follow through. Because again, there are things that some are, would seem minor in some, in some situations. However, it's those little pieces of detail that you can fix very quickly and very easily. And it goes a long way. So information to share. And the board responses pretty well reflected what the community, there was a pretty, you know, it was similar. So that shares that information. And I did have a discussion with President Beard a couple of times that the board is considering abandoning or suspending the search and extending the contract with the interim superintendent. And as we started at the beginning of the search, it is your search, you can do that. But it's a decision that you need to make.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
With the discussion that we had last week, I'd like to make a motion with discussion that we continue our superintendent's search as we are doing. With, I'm just making that with a motion that we continue our, our superintendent's search as we, we, we were doing.
I'll support it.
Discussion?
Discussion, yes. My, I just want to.
So we got the motion by Mrs. Buckley?
Yep.
And it was supported by Mr. Kudrick to continue the superintendent's search.
Yep.
As we're, as we're moving forward now. I mean, Maria, Ben set our timelines and so forth. We have discussion. Ms. Buckley, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, we were talking about it last week just for the audience because we're trying to make the best decision. We were just talking it out to see what was the best thing for the district. You know, I had time to think about it, you know, now we don't have to pay for the search. We can move ahead, get some stability in the district so our employees, you know, we have a vision. So I think that we need to move forward and, and, and get it done. I talked to some people in the community and that was their thoughts as well. So that's, that's just my take on it.
Plus you have the DEP that, you know, next year that we got to keep going with and to travel yourself with the search next year could be difficult.
Yeah.
I sort of looked at it as, that's our main job is, is to get the superintendent to have someone in the lead. And just recently, the Ballville paper had a thing about their superintendent, how when he took over, he had a $5 million deficit. And now they have a 7.5% fund balance. So maybe we can't afford to pay a whole lot now, but maybe we can offer an incentive that if you can get us in line with, so that we eliminate our budget deficit, that you would get ex amount. So that although they realize we can't maybe pay the big bucks now, that we'd be willing to show us that you can do the work and accomplish the goals. Then we can at least make it up in a monetary way, to some degree or something. Because we were going to, the board, the majority voted to collect the winter taxes in the summer. And that just got, that was a hundred thousand dollars. I don't know where that went, but all of a sudden now they're going to spend $4 million to save $60,000. I thought, what's happening to, we're losing some of the little pieces. We need to get someone who's focused and that's, that's, that's how he looks or she looks. Do you know what I'm saying?
I think you need somebody that, those are going to be in a few years to start setting the map for the future.
So we need to, we need to look for that person.
Okay, so right now we have a motion on the floor to continue the superintendent's search. It was moved by Ms. Buckley, supported by Mr. Kudrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this motion carries 7-0. So now we can go to our business of setting our timelines. Mrs. Funderburton?
Just for our audience, last Monday was our first time bringing that up. It didn't come up before that. It hasn't come up in any private meetings or anything like that. There's been some, you know, rumors that, you know, we were trying to slip this through. And that was, that's never our intention is to just slip something through. Our first public meeting about that matter was on Monday and we had it in open session. Because we want your input too with, you know, we want to hear what you're thinking as well. It's not just what we think all the time. It's what you think too, what's best for the district. Bottom line is we need to get out of deficit. We need to move our kids forward and how can we best do that together? Because if we go down, we all going down. And we're paying for something that we don't even have anymore. So that's our objective is to make sure that we, if we're going to have something, I don't want our, I kind of look at it as a car being repo. I don't want my school district repossessed and I'm still paying for something that I don't have possession of anymore. So thank you all for, for coming out of that. I'm not sure if that was what you all were here for tonight, but we just thank you for, for showing up and showing support and hearing from you.
I have a comment that I would like to make in regards to this matter. Only because I know that we're going forward with the superintendent.
Can I interrupt for just a second?
Yeah.
Can I get copies made while we're finishing the discussion so I won't hold anybody out?
Yep. Go ahead.
That's okay. For only because of, we're moving forth with the superintendent's search and I am very concerned about the process. And so I, this is my opinion of an experience that I've already told you all about. I sent you information on what took place. I wanted to take the time now to just give you just a little bit more information and small bullets as to why I went the way that I did about it. Just to inform you on that I did this out of trying to make sure that the process that took place for the interim position that was filled was correct to the best of the ability of the Board of Education. And to make sure that there was no questions as to how the position was filled. And I just want to make sure that this is, know that this is just my personal feeling of how things happen and I need to address it. I believe the integrity of the Board of Education in regards to the interim superintendent position of 2014 has been jeopardized through the unethical decisions in regards to the process of the interviews. On March 3rd, 2014, due to not being present in the three board member committee that was conducting this process, I entered a meeting with our human resource director. I was informed by our human resource director that there were 37 applicants that applied for the position. Out of 37 applicants, she, not the Board of Education, selected five. She then stated that there, this was done because the other 32 that applied were currently working for other districts. And that she did not want them to break their contracts. Not that they chose one way or the other, but that was her decision. I asked Ms. Peck if I could review the five candidates' information she selected. Once again, not all the seven board members selected. I then, this is just a couple of points because I need to, I need to get this to you all to understand where I'm coming from with this. This is very serious to me. I then asked for a copy of the official posting and a list of all the candidates that met the minimum required requirements and the preferred requirements. This was, should have been in my regulation of how I was thinking based upon the preferred, the, based upon the documents of the superintendent's search from 2013, the Michigan Association of School Boards that we all collaborated on. Okay, so I went back to that document and I looked at what was our preferred listing. And then I had the letter, Ms. Miller send me a copy once again of that to make sure that I got the correct one from 2013.
That was for the superintendent, that interim. Cause MASP is not involved with the interim.
Right, right. And, and she, she did state that. Let me, let me make that clear.
Yeah.
Okay. She then, when I say she, I mean Ms. Peck then stated that she did not have a list of either the requirements of the preferred, a list of all the applicants for the preferred criteria that we set or a list for the minimum criteria that we had set. Now I'm saying this because I figured we had not at that point in time, we had not had any other board meetings where we had approved any other criteria to go by at that time, other than what we had already set previously for the superintendent of 2013.
The criteria was the posting.
Okay, I'm going to get to the posting. I'm going to get to the posting. She stated to me, like I said, she did not have a list and that the activity of making that list of those that met that requirement is something that she did in her head. Seeing the bulk of paperwork for the five applicants, I then asked her for a copy of the five that were in front of me for further study. the five that were in front of me for further study. Nope. As I've always said before, I know that, you know, we all are over the superintendent when it comes to hiring anyone in, and that I can't make anybody give me anything. So I was willing to go and make a copy myself, because I didn't want to tell her, "You make the copy for me." Okay? Before I can finish my statement, Ms. Peck denied me a copy of the records. After a discussion, she then took the papers out of my hands and out of my reach on her desk and ended the meeting. I told Ms. Peck that I would be requesting the documents and writing to the superintendent, and I did also CC her on the documents that I sent for a request. When I received the documents, I didn't receive the documents that I requested, but what she did is she responded back to me from the Freedom of Information Act that I had requested it in, and I was able to get a copy of the posting. Okay? But when it got to a copy of the actual applicants of information I did not have, I was said, this was the response that I got from it. "To respond to your request, it would be necessary for the school district to retrieve, examine, copy, and review approximately 37 documents of various length, and persuade to Section 14 of the Freedom of Information Act to separate information which is exempt from disclosure from information which is not exempt from disclosure." Section 4 of Freedom of Information Act permits the school district to charge a fee for searching for, examining, reviewing, providing, and copying public records, and for separating exempt from non-exempt information in public records. Further, the Freedom of Information Act allows the school district to require a deposit of one half of this fee, given a large number of documents to review. In response to your request, the school district exercising its option to require such a deposit. We estimate this total cost at $293.62, and I require a deposit of one half of this amount before processing your request. This is her response to me, and it says her. She responded back with her, you know, her information to say this came from her, to respond back to me through the Freedom of Information Act. But you all know that I'm a board member. After further investigation of the posting I received, which is the posting that we had for the superintendent, the interim superintendent, I noticed that it was not the same posting that the Board of Education approved at the board meeting of December 17 of 2013 for the interim superintendent position. I had a copy of the one that she sent me, and I don't mind giving you all a copy of that one. And I got a copy of the one that was from that meeting. Okay? So it was not the same. So this is other reasons why I was so concerned about the process. Another issue to be investigated is after receiving my board packet for January 13, 2014, I recognized that the board only received one candidate's information to review the position, which was the current interim superintendent out of the 37 applicants that applied, which meant to me I had an incomplete packet. All 37 applicants' information was never discussed or voted on at all by all seven board members. There was not an interview process that took place as discussed on both postings set for January 13, 2014. I was going to make this statement to the interim superintendent, but I am going to request, as a board member now, to get a copy of all applicant's information that applied for the interim superintendent position of 2014. This information can be sent to me in my email, as the district has done with confidential information in regards to board packets before. I was informed that I am only one board member. This is how it came across to me. I would like to remind everybody, since we just completed the Black History Month, that Dr. Martin Luther King was only one person. Rosa Parks was only one person. Sometimes, all it takes is one person just to stand up and make a difference. So I just wanted to let you all know, from my perspective, what I went through and what I'm going through right now, just because I wanted to look at all of the information.
Could I ask, are you wanting them to do more work now, even though we've already, the majority voted on the interim superintendent?
I still would like to see. I want to know the process. I want to know what took place.
I can tell you.
And the fact of the matter is to me...
I can tell. I'm sorry, go ahead.
The fact of the matter is to me, now it's not even just about that, because I know we've gone through. It's the fact of the matter that as a board member, I have a right, and I was denied. I was denied. It was rude. It was disrespectful. And this is my opinion, okay? I came forth, I asked. I did not come through telling anybody to do anything. I was told to come. It was an open door policy. This is what I was told. I didn't come in there with a bunch of information in my hand. The only thing I had was this in my hand, in this folder, that listed the stuff that I wanted, in order to remind myself what to ask her for, so that I can see. I didn't come there trying to demand anything, and this is how I was treated as a board member. I will hope, if we don't stick together on nothing else, that we will stick together when it comes to the respect that each and every last board member deserves, because we were elected by the citizens around us.
Okay. Tamika, just so... I'm going to get to the one part of the process first, because that was myself and Tom Kudryk...
There were three members that were part of that.
And Teresa Beer. And the process is the process we've always followed. The HR department will screen the applicants, because there are a lot of times, there's tons of them. If they don't meet the minimum required requirements, then she sorts through them, gives us the ones that meet the requirements. Okay? So then we go through, and we painstakingly go through, we went through every last one of them, and we decided on the one we thought would be best for the district.
And brought it before the board. That's why it was the only, the one in your packet.
Now, if any given time, I mean, you're welcome to sit on any committee. Anytime there's a process like that, you're welcome to be part of that. They asked for volunteers, so we were the three. Okay? So, and then, and we've had that before, where, you know, I've said, I might not have been in the process of actually reviewing applicants, but I trust my board members to go through and make the best decision and bring a recommendation to the board. If I don't like the recommendation, then I just don't vote on it. But at least, there is a process that we follow. And we don't just sit there and say, "Oh, okay." You know, yeah. You know, we go through, we talk through every last one of the people we had.
Now, one other thing onto that, that Ms. Buckley forgot to mention. Ms. Peck, or the human resource director in the past, has always presorted them, which is they kind of take out some of the ones that don't meet some of the qualifications, and kind of narrows it down a little bit for us, which is helpful, okay? Because there are some things that we don't know, and they painstakingly go through some of the certifications. But if at any time, we wanted to see all the other applicants, the applications were there on the table at the time. So we could have viewed every one of them if we wanted to. So they weren't like, she says, you know, "These are the ones that I'm recommending." The other ones were right there too, that we could look at too. And she gives us a briefing of kind of what some of the ones were, so we know, you know, whether worthwhile trying, you know? I mean, honestly, we had a interim superintendent, and there's some of the things as a committee, if you want to sit on the next committee, then that's fine, if there's one. But when you sit there as an individual, and I'm sitting there thinking, gee, this person's in the southern states, and they're going to come here for a temporary job that may only be a couple months, hmm, I don't know. You know? So yes, could we call each individual one? We haven't never done that in the past, and I don't know of any other people that do that, but I could be wrong. But, I mean, we make the decision. If it's not right, the board votes on it, and that's how it comes up.
There was nothing unethical about it. I don't think, when I sit in on something, I try, I'm honest and above board, and I try to make the best decision with the information that I have. So being unethical, I kind of take a little offense to that, because I'm not unethical. Because everything I did, I followed the process as a board member, and decided on the best I thought for the district, and brought it back before the board. Now, that was the process. So being unethical, that's not me.
Well, I'm just looking at what I was given based upon when I went. Because like I said, I didn't even know we had 37 applicants. I didn't even know that. When I got my board packet, all I saw was one posting, one person's information. And when I came to get some information, that was how I was treated as a board member.
So the basics... So is there... Is there... Can we work this out? Can we... Can our board president, Tamika and Rebecca work it out? Figure, I mean, figure it out, get it worked. So, because Tamika's a board member, so I'm sure she's entitled to some information, but I'm not sure with the privacy issues on...
My only concern I have, and it would be the same concern I would have personally for myself, is the legalities of having somebody's personal information from an application. As a board member, am I allowed to have personal applications with that personal information? That's the only question I have. Ms. Bowles, were you reviewing the applications there, or were you wanting to take them home?
My first initial thought was, after I saw how thick the process, how thick the packets were, I saw there's no amount of time that I could have spent to, at that time, in that meeting, it was already five, like 5:30. Our meeting started at 5:30, if I'm not mistaken. And after seeing just the extent, I couldn't view all of that information at one time. That's why I asked for a copy. That's why I asked. If it had have been one or two sheets, then, you know, maybe I would have looked at it differently. But at that point in time, all I said is, I came into a meeting, I didn't know anything about how many people was in there. I'm thinking it's only one person based upon the board packet that I got. When I got there, she told me there was 37 applicants. Then I looked at the 37 applicants, and she told me again, "I picked out five." So you have to look at me from a new, from a new board member coming in. I'm like, "What do you mean, you picked out five?" Then I thought about the meeting that we had, and I said, "That wasn't even told, that wasn't even brought up, that there were five, that there were 37 applicants." I had no idea. So then I'm like, "Well, why are you making this decision?"
Yeah, but that was in our... When we had our executive session, that was shared with us, that we had that many that we had.
I did not hear... I can, we can go back, back and forth. I did not hear 37 applicants. The point of the matter is, I asked to see the information. I had the right as a board member, and I was denied.
Okay.
So...
We were legal response. Did we get a legal response?
We did. And actually, and I'm not going to, I don't want to correct Tamika, you know, as part of this discussion, we can certainly talk about it offline if the board president and superintendent would like me to have a discussion or discuss it with them. The information was requested, that the copies be made at that moment and given at that moment. And that wasn't something that I was prepared to do, because I knew that I had to check the legal ramifications of providing personal information, you know? So I needed to find out what information I needed to deduct off of that information, and then provide to the board member. Unfortunately, the events of that evening, the board member did not want to wait for that, so a FOIA request was then submitted the very next day. So I followed the FOIA language on that. So the response that Mrs. Bowles received from me in writing was in direct response to the FOIA request. So let me go back for a minute. The information that she requested was not denied. I couldn't give it to her that night. I needed to check with our legal department, and that was not received well at all. So with that said, with the direction of the superintendent and the board president, I mean, I'll do whatever is requested of me.
Let me say one thing. As I said earlier, this was bullet points. You all got the memo as to what happened. I stated in there that I asked for the information, since we go in there, and I was denied. Then I said that she changed the story later and said, "Oh, I needed to check with that in regards to, to make sure that that could be given to me, to make sure there was no problem legally." I stated that in the information I gave you way before now.
Right.
Okay.
Hey, Tamika.
So I just want to make sure that I put that out there.
What were you looking for, like in the application, like background and experience and stuff like that?
Right. That's all I was really looking for.
And I know those packets can be huge. I mean, because I know...
And so I even went through and showed her. I said, "Okay, well, I tell you what." I said, "Here's a resume." I said, "What about, just take me the resume." I don't, maybe I don't need to see, maybe I'll be able to get what I get from just the five, until you can check on the other 30, 30-some odd papers, 31 papers. I couldn't even get that. And like I said, then it went from being no to oh, let me check, and then this meeting is over. So, you know, we can go back and forth all day, but it shouldn't have went down.
Could there be like, like even for future, I mean, could we do like a face sheet where there's like maybe just one page of all their history and background and degrees and stuff like that? And then that way, don't have all the pertinent information, like, you know, social security or their address and things like that with their name? And then, would that be a lot easier to look at? You know, I mean, I don't need to see the copy.
With our superintendent's search, we have it anyway.
Right, but I'm saying, if you want to do a quick look, I mean, those packets can be huge. And I know when I was going through some of them, when we did the last search, some of the stuff I couldn't understand, some of the classes they had. But if we just had a face sheet on each candidate, if you broke down, like, you know, they went here, they went there, they have this, they did that school, is that something she was looking for, right?
Well, case in point, the 37 people, okay, Tamika, the ones you were talking about, how thick they were, multiply that by 37 times. Okay? So I can't... So her going through and screening them to get it to where there's five people that meet, you know, closely meet everything that we need, that's usually what happens, okay? In a situation like that, because to go through 37, what, plus whatever, I just don't have, I have a job, I don't have time to... I pay her to do that.
I understand that.
So I don't have time to go through.
But I thought it said in the board bylaws that we are the people that employ the superintendent, not Rebecca Peck. So if we employ the superintendent, how can we, how can we employ him if we don't have all the information on the table? Here's the gist of it. If it is something that is by law, please provide me with federal, state laws that restrict elected officials to time constraints and specification of destinations that must be followed when receiving confidential information pertaining to issues that require action or vote. And I'm done with it.
Let me ask you this. Tamika, do you still want to see the applications?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Madam President, could you contact the superintendent and get this issue resolved between you and the superintendent as representing the board?
Let's take care of it.
So Ms. Bowles can actually get this done, and then the superintendent can work with Ms. Peck? That way, we can get it handled and...
I said, just meet and take care of it.
Right.
You guys work it out.
But this way, she's got adequate time or something, they can work on a schedule, because it's going to take a little while to go through them, if she's looking at them.
Okay.
That's consensus of the board then, right?
Am I back on?
Yeah.
You're back on.
Back up.
Again, for the record, that had, that was not regarding the superintendent's search.
No. This is, this is was old school.
All right, let's get back on hers.
Okay, right. And because I just don't want it to be misconstrued. Again, though, this is a, this is a, one of the reasons why, as we go through the search, especially if you're in the audience throughout, you'll hear me repeating things over and over again about confidentiality, or how you can, you know, that how board members will get the information. And that's for that reason, so that there, it is a clear understanding. And so, and that's why we count things and get that back through. So I'm going to pass these down, and... Just kind of as a guideline that I started to put together, and I didn't send it to the board, because I wasn't sure in which direction the board was going to move. But where we're at now is, we need to establish the timelines, so I'd like to go to that, and then back up and look at some of the things, because what we want to accomplish tonight is to be able to put the wording together for the official posting, and basically make sure that I get the criteria in that the board desires.
So there is no official posting out yet?
No. No.
Or the permanent superintendent's search.
No. What I put up and shared with the board was a preliminary, just a preliminary posting that says Romulus is looking for a superintendent.
It was a news brief.
And it was a news brief, but it's also on the website for all the searches for superintendents, so that they know that. And I said, "The tentative dates are..." We are free to change, you know, tentative closing date that we had mentioned in April, so that at least the information is out, because we are, we have headed into, since we last met, into superintendent search season.
Yes.
Every day, there's two or three more. Every day there's two or three more names coming up that, you know, superintendents are leaving or electing to leave. So people are looking. And just for the record, have gotten informa, or have gotten phone calls from both in-state and out-state potential candidates of people. And my response has been, I haven't met with the board to establish a criteria. When we do, it will be up on the website. So there is interest, but again, they're looking for, what is Romulus looking for in a superintendent? So hopefully we'll have that tonight. And what you have is some of the, if you'll go to the, I think it's the third page back. Yeah, I apologize. I have an email in there also that, that was the wording and then I found it again because I couldn't find it in my email. So the possible timeline, if we can work to that. And let's work from back, where you want to end up, and then we'll kind of move to where we are today. Superintendent on site still on or before July first?
Yes, I would say. When is, when is our interim up, June 30th?
June 30th, this one, March 20th, yes.
All right. I would say that's a good date.
Yeah, the first is that starts every week.
Sorry.
On or before, so that gives us a little leeway.
Right.
Right. Which means that if you finish the search and you want to bring the superintendent on earlier, you know, that's up to the board. I apologize. Um, so, no, it's, I'm supposed to be on silent. Then backing up, what we will need to do is set the, the posting will start. Basically, if we finish everything today, the posting will begin tomorrow or the day after. It may take them an extra day, but they were pretty fast last time to get the information up. As soon as it's up on the, on the site, on the MASB website, and which then goes to the MASAA website and all the other search sites with links, I will notify the board of that so that you, you know, you'll stay in the loop. But assuming that you want to interview around mid-May, and I put a number of days, I put a Saturday in there, just kind of that that would be about mid-May. That would mean that the board would screen the applications around May 6th. Making the application deadline April 16th. April 16th is just prior to the Easter holidays. So, and as I shared with the board in the, before we, as we started the search, I will be, I will be gone from around the 20th to the 30th for about a 10-day period. So I won't be available. But the other thing I'm cognizant of, and I think the discussion came here, is that last time we had, I believe it was thirty-some candidates. That's, and the board does get everything. They get all the, you know, for that, all of the information. And the concern last time was that there wasn't as much time to go through them, that it took a long time. So I've kind of elongated the amount of time that the board will get the, have the applications.
And just to clarify, the application deadline of April 16th, noon. No applications after 12:00 noon will we receive to be considered?
Correct. That, that's what the standard, because there was one that came, you will, okay.
And I wanted to make sure that we-
It says noon, it doesn't say for best considerations, what we're trying to get at.
No, no, it will say noon. And usually what happens is at noon, they shut the site down at MASBS. So occasionally one will continue through and will actually not come in till, let's say, 12:30, okay? We try, they, somehow the pipeline doesn't quite close. I think it's if an application is in the middle of the process.
Yeah. Which is fair.
I will still share an application that comes in late, as I did the last time, and it, but it will say after the deadline, okay? So then it would take the board's action to revert from saying, okay, you know, that we're going to take, you know, we want to consider it. So, but do it, we do it at noon for a couple of reasons. One, at noon, there's still somebody in the office that, in case there's a glitch, that they can fix it and, you know, we don't run in, and we know at noon it's shut.
Right.
The other piece is, I tell candidates, don't wait to the last minute. Because it's with everything else, anybody who does anything across the internet knows when the, when it gets busy, you know, or if, or if suddenly your computer goes down or your, you know, fax machine, you can't get it done, that's on them, you know? And so the date is published well in advance, candidates know that. There are some people who prefer to wait till the end because they believe that the names will get out if it's in earlier. The names don't get out. The board members, for the sake of the audience and the viewing public, the board members will not know who the applicants are until April 16th. On April 16th, all of the board members, if they have access to the computers, but as soon thereafter, will have, will have access to all of the candidates. The board members are under an ethics code that basically says they will not release any of the names. We will refer to them by numbers and through that whole initial process. So the only time the public will know that who the candidates are is, are those that will actually be interviewed. So if they are not ever interviewed, we do not release that, those names or information ever. And those are, actually, all applications are collected after the process is over. And either the district keeps them on, keeps one master file on file, but we, we shred documents. So at the very end, after it's over. So again, through this process, you'll know who they are on the 16th. So you'll have from the 16th to somewhere that, you know, around May 6th. And those dates were just some dates I pulled off of the calendar to give you some choices to look at. If you have your calendars with you, if we can pick dates, that would be perfect. Because I'd like to publish the screening date so that that's clear to everybody, especially to the community. So we have some time to get that, to have people here because we will screen those in a public meeting.
Okay, well, May 12th is our, is a board meeting, a normal board meeting. So I don't know, I'm trying to remember how we did it last time, if we called it a special meeting for the screening?
I believe it was a special meeting because of the time.
It was a special meeting.
So we could do it on the-
Well, she's got tend to believe the 6th, 7th, then 12th, how about the 5th?
There must be a reason why I didn't put the 5th, let me look.
You have May 6th, 7th, and the 12th.
I could tell you the 7th, 8th, I'm going to be gone, so that from the 7th on, I'm going to be in Texas.
As long as it is not in early meeting on the 5th, if we can do 6:00 or 6:30, I can do that. I can't, I can't get here before that time on the 5th.
What time did you say you could be here on the 5th?
6:00 or 6:30.
Will that work for everybody else on Monday?
May 5th.
That's Monday on the 5th.
May 5th.
That'll be fine.
So May 5th, 6:00 PM for board screening. Is it a travel issue for you for whether it's 6:00 or 6:30?
I'm going to be coming from Grand Rapids, the Grand Rapids area, so we won't have snow then, will we?
Oh, we may.
This is Michigan.
You know, we could have a snowstorm.
No, I'll get here, I'll get here by 6:00. My concern was, I think, last time we started at 5:30 and that would, might be tight. But no, I'll be here by then. May 5th at 6:00?
5th, right?
May 5th, yes. Okay, and then if we can set, we screened the 5th. And in between that time, we're going to have to craft those questions. I've got interviews set the week of May 21st. Actually, Monday is the 19th.
All right. That's an off night for us, so.
It'd be better to do it the 19th then, wouldn't it?
Is there a reason you didn't put the 19th?
I'm in Saginaw that day. Uh, what time do you want, well, if, you're probably going to need two nights.
19th and 20th?
But she's not, she's not available on the 19th.
How about 20th and 22nd?
20th and the 22nd?
She's in Saginaw.
I can do the 20th and 22nd.
You want to do it back, or you want to do back-to-back nights?
That's good for me. What day is that on?
Tuesday and a Thursday. And you may only need one day for interviews, it depends on how many candidates you can interview.
How early could you get here on the 20th?
What's your date?
How early on the 20th?
Tuesday, May 20th?
Yeah.
Thursday, May 22nd.
4 o'clock, 4:30?
It'll be 5:30, the earlier speaking do it. Yeah, 5:30 would be the year.
Sandy, you gotta get here by 5:00, right?
Oh, no, I thought you said how early could I be here?
Right.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah, how early could you be that, well, we know.
But the board members can't be here before 4:00.
Yeah, that's fine, no, later is better for me.
5:30, okay with everybody?
What's that, the 20th, 20th and the 22nd, right?
And we can set the times. I mean, you can put them in your, your calendars for now, but we'll set the times once you screen the applicants and we know how many we have to interview.
You can be here at 5:30 if we need them, right?
I most definitely can, yes.
Okay.
And that's, those will be the days that we're going-
May 20th, you'll-
What we're going to ask in the interviews, correct? That's not the day we're doing the interviews.
No, that's the days you're going to do the interviews.
That's the day of the interviews. The screen, the screening is when we'll put the questions, right? We'll do the questions, formulate the questions on the screening.
Or between the screening and the interviews starting.
I think last time, we just kind of sent in some of the questions that we wanted to ask and then you helped us formulate a sheet.
Exactly.
And we approved it.
And John brought up a point, he wanted to know, you wanted to talk about doing a rubric.
Yeah, more so than, you know, like maybe just adding up all the scores instead of like how we did it last time. It seemed so confusing and-
He was uncomfortable.
I was uncomfortable like that, picking this number and that number and then, and then everyone's hearing who you're, you know, I, I don't know, you know, people can be jaded. I would just like having a score. And you score them, you throw them all down and you add up those seven scores for that candidate.
Okay, and you know what, we really were supposed to do that, but the board wasn't doing it, so we stopped. Because it was, you were supposed to rate each answer with a one, two, three. And then you were supposed to total up, but, but nobody was, was scoring them, so that's why we didn't have scores.
I'd rather see that question with one to so many points possible and, and give it a bigger broad of that answer instead of a zero, one, two. I mean, you know, zero, I didn't do it, three, or two, I did it. You know, I mean, that's, you know, I like to see a broader answer like a zero to five.
We can do that. And we can talk about that, but we can also, and I'd like to set, whether we do it the night of the screening, it would be more, or between now and then even, because I can come back for another board meeting if necessary. But to talk about, in terms of if you want to see something different in terms of the process or the questions, I think Romulus is in a little bit different situation than you were a year, a year ago because you were moving toward deficit. You're there now, so I think the finance issues are probably a little more.
And we have less staff than we did before, too.
Right. So depending on if you want to go more scenario-type questions, you know, specifically, or, you know, to give, as opposed to a general question, you know, what is the experience with such and such? So if I can get some feedback ahead of time, I will start to craft questions based on the criteria that you're going to set earlier than I did last time, so I'll give you a little bit more time so that by the 5th, when we're screening, there may even be some samples out there for you.
So we could combine those, we were looking at doing the boards, is the superintendent screening the 5th?
Yes.
Yeah.
And-
Interviews would be made 20th and 22nd.
Right.
You know, I thought there was something else we need to throw in there.
A second, that, that comes along the way, too. That's on, not necessarily at a board meeting.
We couldn't do that at the end of the superintendent screening, come up with the questions?
Sure.
On the same night?
We do that night?
Yes.
On the 5th?
That's what we do.
Yep, my thought is to talk about it then, they won't be formalized and finished by then, but yes. And what I will do is give, since you'll have a little bit of time while the posting is up, I'll start sending things to you to kind of consider as we go along. So it kind of gives you a little more time to think about it.
So you'll be prompting us with emails as far as, send me this, send me that.
Yes. And I will again caution the board members, when you reply, reply to me, not reply all. So that there is no, you know, thought that there is a, if it's something that needs to go out to all board members, I'll send it rather than having board members carry on a conversation.
Right.
So, then, if you interview on the 20th and 22nd, if there's a need for a second interview, and there may not be, you may be at the point where you found the candidate and you're ready to go, but if you need a second interview, are you looking, do you want to look at the week of May 27th, which is the immediate, the next week?
That's Memorial Day.
Monday is Memorial Day. Or do you want to go the following week, which would be June 2nd?
You're going to start getting, you're going to start getting closer graduation.
Prom, reclamation.
But you don't have much choice, though, so.
How about, well, I mean, we can do 27, 28, 20, or 29, you just can't do it on Monday.
What's that, the 20, what?
28th is a Wednesday, 27th is a Thursday.
What about the 29th, that way if there is anybody that's out of town, they would have-
That's a Thursday.
I know.
Yeah, I'll be, yeah, she'll be back.
Maybe do it in June 2nd, get a half to them, right? Proms are going to be-
Well, the 29th, well, what about the 29th? What day is the 29th?
That's on a Thursday.
29th is a Thursday.
Tamika, what about Thursday? Yeah, I'll try to get that on, I could do that.
We may not, we may not need it.
You may not need it. The other thing is, we will publish the first interview dates. We won't necessarily publish the second interview dates, but I'd like to be able to, pardon?
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But I'd like to be able to tell candidates as they're interviewing, well, you know, if there is a second round, it will be around this time. So 29?
Yep. What time can you be here?
I can be here anytime that day.
Let's just say, if we get consistent, so we're not a little bit faking it.
What, 5:30?
5:30.
Just gives us a little bit more time, that's all we need to ensure it's night that-
So all the other ones are at 6:00 PM and then this one's at 5:30?
No, all the other ones are at 5:30.
The screening is at 6:00, everything else is at 5:00.
May, okay, that's, I was just going to reiterate to make sure that I had it written correctly. May 5th is 6:00 PM, May 20th and 22nd beginning at 5:30. And depending on how many you have. And then the 29th for second interviews if needed. Okay, so you've got a timeline. What I also, right above that, is the language of what the board set for the superintendent last time out. So I thought that might be a good starting point. And I'll read it for the benefit of the audience. It's "The Romulus Community Schools Board of Education seeks an experienced visionary leader to be its next superintendent. The successful candidate will be a leader who inspires his or her team with a shared vision of the future and leads by using consensus building and other group processes to arrive at mutually beneficial decisions. The successful candidate will be able to demonstrate a proven track record of successfully serving as an effective collaborative leader in a transformational environment. The district would like a candidate with a minimum education level of a master's degree and administrative certification, doctorate preferred, with proven success as a K-12 public school administrator, central office preferred. The board will offer a competitive, comprehensive, multi-year contract commensurate with the education and experience of the successful candidate." What we can also, if, we can change that wording if you want. We can add bullet points below that, if there's, and that's kind of that listing in the, in the very front page, if there's anything there. But I guess, what I'd like to go back to minimally is what's the education level that you want? So let's start there.
Marie, is that basically what we, what our surveys, this is pretty much what we ask for? Can you explain with each, well, the administrative certification?
Okay, there is a central office certification and there is a superintendent certification. Then in Michigan, it's still a voluntary certification, so they don't, you don't have to have that. If your school is North, and I've, I apologize, NCA, then what you want, you have to have as a, the candidate has to have a master's plus 30, the equivalent of that. So that would be a master's degree with 30 additional hours. They could have an ed specialist degree, they could have a doctorate degree. But the number of, and that's to maintain North Central accreditation. They also must have teaching experience if they, if you want to meet the North- They also must have teaching experience if they, if you wanna meet the North Central accreditation. Now, there are some ways to get around that, but that's the easiest way.
Yeah, I don't think.
Okay, so you want teach, so it's a minimum of five years of teaching experience.
Okay.
So we can put in there, meet N.C.A. requirements of that, you know?
Yep, I say let's do that, but I'm just one person.
Consensus?
I agree.
N.C.A. N.C.A.?
Yeah.
So leave, leave in the, um, so you want at least a minimum, they must meet the N.C.A. requirement, um, education, then that will take care of your minimum education level. Do you still want doctorate preferred?
Let me ask a question, when you said certification, which, does the N.C.A. also include the superintendent cert?
The N.C.A., no.
So what does the M.C., say it again for me?
North Central Association is the governing body that accredits your high school?
And our, well, our, the whole district.
Okay, and your elementary school, so the entire district?
Okay.
And in their, their certification process, they also set requirements for the superintendent, and that's an educational level of, for the superintendent, which is thirty hours beyond a master's degree.
Okay.
Okay, so thirty hours beyond a master's degree, could be two master's degrees, it could be an ed specialist degree, they wouldn't have to have a master's at all, but that would be the equivalent, 'cause it's basically sixty hours and ed specialist's a little bit more than that right now, or a doctorate degree, which is gonna be above that.
Okay.
So, you know, some boards still want, you know, would prefer the doctorate, uh, 'cause that usually, they usually have a area of specialty, it's up to you.
Do you guys want doctorate preferred put in the description?
Not really.
I do.
We've had them with and without, so.
Right, doesn't make them any more or less, less or more qualified.
Last one we had with a doctorate degree, they left.
Can it list the word doctorate, does that matter, preferred?
Okay.
Pardon?
Can you list doctorate but not doctorate preferred?
If you say doctorate, that means they gotta.
Then that, if you, I, if you put the word doctorate, that means you're only gonna consider those candidates that have a doctorate, that that's what you want, so doctorate preferred says, well, consider others, but we're really looking for someone with a doctorate degree. So that's what we decided last time.
It makes it more broader.
It, it basically gives you the ability to take it, someone with, you know, with, without the doctorate, or they might be finishing their doctorate.
Right. Okay, so how many do we got for keeping doctorate preferred in?
I mean, that, just the.
I can't tell, I apologize.
Doesn't matter to me either way.
I don't really care.
Okay, we got two, it doesn't matter, I thi, I think I saw two doctorate preferred, that's four.
I mean, if you put it in there, that way you can at least, if you have it in there, then you can just, at least you have the option of.
But it's an option.
Right.
Yeah, it is strictly optional.
So it's no sense, we might as well just keep our.
That's what you had last time, then leave it the same way.
Keep it there.
Yep.
Okay, the minimum experience level, and that's the kind of experience, or, and the type of experience, so, um, are you looking for someone who has, you already said teaching in North Central, so it's at least five years of teaching, um, I assume at the K-12 level.
Master degree, for sure.
Then, are you looking for?
Central office preferred, yeah.
Okay, do you wanna stick with central office preferred?
Well, if it's preferred, I mean, that means if they got it, great, but if you put central office and you narrow that parameter down too much, that's all, so, how do you wanna do it, same way with the doctorate degree? If you leave it on there without preferred, that means they gotta have it, right?
The more you put it there.
Right.
Okay.
And what this said was, uh, K-12 public school administrator, which means they needed to have administration experience.
But is it, I'm sorry, John, I heard, heard of what you said, if we put it out, it.
We're gonna, we're gonna pay for it.
Yeah.
More, more stuff they got behind their name, the more you're gonna have to pay for.
But, I mean, that's, but you never know, they might wanna, maybe that's their passion, maybe they wanna take a job that, like that, so.
So, uh, you wanna leave K-12 public school administrator and then central office preferred?
I have a question about the central office preferred, um, is there large classifications or, or things that central office personnel have different from the public school administrator? So like, for instance, when I think of a central office preferred, especially a superintendent, they, they have to be aware of Robert's Rules of Orders and how to, what to conduct and as far as laws and that kinda thing, so, you know, would it?
Depending, depending on where the person is a superintendent, 'cause remember, we have super, we have schools that have superintendents that are, uh, two, a hundred and eighty, I think, or a hundred, a hundred students in a school district in Michigan.
Gotcha.
Okay, the person is a superintendent and a building administrator at the same time, so they have one, they have one administrator in that district, but they're still su, considered superintendent. Um, so in terms of that there are variations, your central office usually will include H.R.
Right.
Experience, it will include, uh, usually your assistant superintendents, associate superintendents, curriculum directors, um, business officials are usually what fits into the category of central office. Central office obviously includes superintendent experience.
I guess, I, maybe I need to reword my question, is there certain certifications that they need to have in addition to what a public school administrator would have?
There are, at this point, they all need to carry the same, and they need to complete the six hours, but in turn, there are certifications that they will have, but in most cases, they're not required by law to have the certifications. So, um, the public school adminis, a K-12 public school administrator could include, depending on what, where the district is, a department head, no building experience, so if you want, if you want a minimum of building admin, uh, you, you could say at least a K-12 building administrator, if you wanna change, if you wanna put that in there.
That's fine.
Last time, there was a big discussion about public school, okay, so that's why we put that word in, so that it was.
Well, can we put K-12 public school, building administrator?
Yes, I mean, you.
Do we have in there, uh, experience also, so that's in there, too, when you said central office? That includes the assistant superintendent and experience and all that, okay.
Now, again, you've got, central office experience would be something with central offices, which are, what you're telling the per, what, when you put central office preferred, what the message basically is going out is that you want somebody that has above building administration.
Yeah.
Some type of, that's, that's your preference, that doesn't mean that you'll, it'll preclude, it won't stop you from hiring someone who is going from a, you know, building administration to superintendency, but your preference is someone who has had the experience of dealing with some of the, you know, it could be an interim superintendent, it could be a, uh, central office position.
So can we put?
Stuff going on.
Can we, could, could we still put just assistant, have an experience in a superintendent field, whether it's assistant superintendent, interim superintendent?
Do you wanna put that instead of central office experience?
I just wanna make sure that it's.
Superintendent experience preferred is what you're trying to say?
I just wanna make sure it's on there, that we want, you know, we'd be looking for somebody, we would prefer someone with experience.
As a superintendent.
Yeah, than not having someone that just has the building and not ever being in that position as a superintendent.
I don't wanna narrow it, I, well, that's my personal, I don't know if I wanna narrow it that much, so.
That's actually broadening it, in it, 'cause we're saying.
No, you're, no, you're narrowing it actually that way.
'Cause they'll say, well, if I don't have superintendent experience.
Then I can't apply.
I mean, 'cause you could find a great candidate without that.
Central office, right, central office experience is more broad than superintendent or, you know, or a superintendent experience. Superintendent, some people are gonna look at that and think only superintendent, uh, others will look at it and say, well, it's either a deputy.
Well, we could get grants and curriculum directors to apply, we could get someone that's a business finance director.
You can get H.R., you can get finance, you know, with all that, with central office experience. If you narrow it with superintendent, you're only gonna get.
'Cause see, some of those people are considered, they used to call them like assistant superintendents or whatever, but some will have dual roles as, as a business manager and a superintendent.
And now, very honestly, in some situations, they'll work in central office and they don't have a title because the title costs the money, so they've taken away the titles, it's the job experience.
You can stipulate that, that if you're superintendent already in the past, then your salary's almost coming with that, too, and that's not gonna be the case, maybe.
So what did the, um, when you did the, the list of, um, citizens that kind of may have, uh, put down their opinion of what they would like, what was, what was listed in that, was there any questions in regards to that?
Yeah.
What did they feel about that?
Okay, now remember, we had forty-one answered this, okay? So of forty-one, um, and some of them obviously chose more, you could choose more than one of these, okay? So twenty-two said assistant superintendent, that was the high, assistant superintendent with twenty-two or fifty-three, almost fifty-four percent, twenty-one said building principal, eighteen said superintendent.
Okay.
But again, they're dup, they're duplicated, so they could've said superintendent, assistant superintendent, building, yeah, altogether. Um, eighteen said teacher, seventeen said central office, five said special education, and two said community education, so.
So the top one's anything over fifteen, we pretty much got covered, right?
So by putting central office preferred, you'd be hitting almost all of those?
Yes.
Yeah, that's how you leave it.
Which one would we be leaving out?
Central office preferred, the building principal, you'd be leaving out the building principal, but you've got that in the, in the initial, because you're saying you want them to have at least K-12, so you get them all.
So, okay, so we get them all.
You get all.
We're good right now, you good?
All right.
But that was a very good question. Leadership style, um, and the last time, we kinda, I ran a couple of them in because there was no strong, uh, opinion by the board or the community last time. This time, from the board members that responded, um, situational leadership was one, and that's a leader who demonstrates different leadership styles depending on the situation. Number two was traditional superintendent leadership, this person will make the final decision but invites other members of the team to contribute to the decision-making process. And the third one was collaborative, but again, that, uh, only represented a partial part of the board, so if you don't have a definite, or a preference to leadership style, that'll come out in the interview process.
Marie, can you go over the, um, are you gonna, can you go over the education requirements, so I'm just clear on what we discussed, can you go through that for me again? I hate to have you back up, I just wanna make sure we're clear.
That's okay, I gotta find the paper I wrote on.
Colleague and I were discussing, make sure we're clear.
Okay, minimum education level, okay, that would be the education level of the person that's applying, and what you said is you want them to minimally meet the N.C.A. requirement, which would be a master's plus thirty. And then for the educational level, you said doctorate preferred, okay?
Okay, a master's plus thirty, so that's thirty.
Hours.
Hours over a master's.
Right.
So it's like a, that's almost like a double degree, though, right?
It is.
But now, when we say the master's thirty plus, I mean, the master's plus thirty, that means we, they have to have it, or is it preferred?
No, that means that they'd have to have it.
Minimum requirement.
Minimum, okay.
And does that come with probably more salary?
But when, when you say a master's degree plus thirty, or, or is it or, and an administrative certificate? Certification, or is it and? Are we saying they gotta have a, and an administrative certificate?
Okay.
One or the other?
That's why I'm trying to, that's why I wanna make sure I went all, because I'm not.
No, okay, what you, what you said before is, okay, two things, let's go back to what you had, and that may be where the confusion is, in the posting last time, it was a master's degree.
Yes.
And administrative certification, both.
Right.
Okay, now, you said you wanted North Central, so whatever North Central is, it will trump, um, the other. So what my suggestion was put, master's degree in administrative certification, must meet N.C.A. requirements, and then doctorate preferred, which means that you'll take somebody with a master's and the administrative if they can get the approval from N.C.A. What happens usually is, if you hire a candidate that doesn't have that, they have, I believe it's two years to get it, to meet the North Central, okay, so you can do that. But what you're telling someone is, if you're going to be our superintendent, you may not have the North Central accreditation, um.
Now.
Now, but you will meet that within, you know, the timeframe, and they know that going in.
So.
Okay, 'cause that was my concern, because to me, it would say master's degree, well, N.C.A. requirements, that means they have to have that plus the thirty hours in for, in order for us to hire them.
Well, it would be, or, no, it would, you can hi, actually, I'm gonna be perfectly honest, you can hire them without, without. Okay, but what you're saying is.
If you're doing, taking the pain to do this, you should try to stick.
Right, so what you're saying is, you gotta have a master's degree, we're not gonna consider anybody without a master's degree, okay?
That's good.
We also want someone who's gonna maintain, help us maintain our North Central accreditation, we're not gonna lose that because you don't have what you need.
Exactly.
So that means contingent upon your hiring, you must want, agree that if you don't meet it, you're going to meet it in the timeframe.
So if they don't have it, we can give them a lot of time to obtain it, is what you're saying?
Yeah, well, North Central gives you the lot of time, correct.
So if we say a master's degree and an administrative certificate, that means they gotta have at least a master's and the certificate, and then if we want them to meet the North Central, we have to give them a lot of, they have to agree to the time to.
Right.
Get that, so they don't need the thirty right when they come out.
Exactly, and what, and what this also says is, they must have an administrative certificate, it doesn't say a superintendent certificate, they could have an administrative certificate to be an administrator as a business official, as a, uh, building principal, whatever.
How long does it take to do that, though, that's only, what, hours, is it?
Uh, no, it's, it's time and hours, so it, it takes some time, they're gonna have to come in with that done.
Some people have it already.
Most have it.
But the administrative certificates, building and finance, curriculum, H.R., okay.
Superintendent.
And we say this is the minimum requirement, right?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, so we don't need the thirty hours?
Nope.
They have, they can, we can make them get it.
Right.
Right.
Okay, that's, that's what I made sure I was.
That's why, that's why I was, that's why. Yep, that's why I left it as master's degree and then put the North Central in there, and, because to be honest, I missed it last time.
Okay.
And, um, then also to ma, the.
Doctorate preferred.
Preferred, okay?
All right.
Experience level, um, I think we have all of the, is there any other criteria that you want? Um, because again, we can use that wording and then I can do bullet points below it, uh, if there's something that resonates with you that you want, or do you think we have it all? Um, do you want the bullet point of experience in finance, budget development management, personnel management, public relations, curriculum development and evaluation? You wanna be that, in other words?
If we get that pick, yeah, it's gonna narrow it down too much, anybody that's applying, we can see that when we come through.
Okay.
Can we, can we just do that in the interviews, I mean, it's whatever we need to know.
To see if they have that, yep.
I mean, at least we have the candidates and then we can go from there.
Okay.
At least we get them to apply.
We have that, um, then I, the one other thing I have is, the board members have before them, or you have access to, or I'll, I'll give you, I'll pass this copy around, um, but this, the superintendent profile came from four board members, and these, it was put together by the, um. M.A.S.B. offices for me, so I didn't do this, but I know that the salary compensation was a consensus of the four that came in, okay? There was one that was lower, there was one that was higher, so Kelly took the two that were in that, within that range. Is that the range that you base, we will, we will not publish the range, but very honestly, when someone calls me, I wanna be able to tell them that, you know, what, it's, you're looking, you know, you're not looking at a hundred and ninety thousand dollar salary.
So it's one-twenty-one to one-thirty satisfactory.
And not a car, either a gas card.
So it's one-twenty-one to one-thirty satisfactory.
One-twenty-one to one-thirty.
Let me ask, let me ask this, Marie, what is, what is the, um, since there's gonna be other districts looking for superintendents, what is the going? other districts looking for superintendents, what is the going, like the average?
Like our size of a district?
I think I sent, I sent those to you early on, but it was a, I mean, they're--
Yeah, you did.
It's the high and low, and I think it ranged from about 120, 125 to about 140, 150.
We're not talking LaVonie here.
No, 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 these, these were some districts smaller. But again, some of those were superintendents who have been sitting for a few years within the district, so, or they were employees of the district for a long time and had some things in the contracts that they just carried through.
So we're going 121 to 130?
Is, is everybody okay with that range? Or do we want to change that?
Well, I know that Belleville's paying 132, and they, that's with someone who has brought them out of a $5 million budget deficit and given them, they now have a 7.5 percent fund balance. So he's, like, that's what he's making after a proven great record.
I bet he was making every four. Yeah, I'm sure he was.
They were making that when he was in a deficit, so he, he didn't get a bonus because--
He came in.
You know what, and I, I will tell you, and let me be, be perfectly honest with you with some of the things that the state retirement board has done, okay? They have done some things with superintendent, at least superintendent's contracts, because I can speak to that, that you can't take a huge bump up, like, you can't go in and say, I will take a $25,000 less salary, and then, you know, if we get here, I'm going to, you know, you'll give me, so I'll come in at $100,000, and if we make these points, I'll get to 125. Because when they actually do, if, now, if it's someone who's got a long time till retirement, it will not affect them. But if it's someone who is within the last five to 10 years--
Right.
--what they will say is, you can't, you've got too big of a bump.
Right.
And so we are going to retrofit that, and the average increase of salaries for superintendents in that area, size and area, was 3 percent, so we're only going to count 123, you know, 120, so they, they bump it down. So that's why they'll come and stay on salaries, and then the reality, and it has to do with retirement purposes. So, so the--
Do you think our range is too low?
No, I, you know what, I wouldn't recommend anything higher, you can't afford anything more.
You can't afford it right now.
Yeah.
Obviously, yeah.
I'm, I'm realistic, you know.
You know, you just, it's to worry about the candidate you get, I mean, it's--
Well, and, you know what, if they're, if they're a candidate who's truly interested in the district, and they see what that range is--
They'll do it.
They'll, they're going to look at that, and they're going to say one of two things, well, you know what, I'm going to come in, and I'm going to show them, and I'll see if I can't negotiate a little bit higher.
Right.
And the answer is yes or no at that point.
Right.
But usually, once they've gone through the process, they know what they're getting. So they may want to come in at the higher, you know, I think the top end is where, you know, many will want to start.
Well--
Realistically.
Gee, I'm always, I'm tired of starting at the bottom, I want to start at the top salary.
Well, you know, and again, I, if you get, if you get a candidate who has a lot of experience, I think Mr. Thied said that, you know, then it's going to cause, it's, it would be the top of the--
The high end, right.
If it's going to be someone who doesn't have the experience, you know, you can be pretty sure that it's at the bottom end, you know, so--
Just like any other job.
And if the person at the high end, they have to perform, I mean--
And if it's someone who's coming in, you know, it may be someone who says, I want a little more in salary, but I'm not, I don't need any healthcare, you know, so there's some different options that, you know, down the road. I think that's a competitive salary for these times.
Okay.
Okay, so that, you know, I'm not uncomfortable with that salary in terms of it being too low. I don't think it's really too high either for, you know, because you're asking, again, because you're going to ask for a superintendent who's going to come in and who's going to have some tough things to do and long hours, because when you're looking at a deficit elimination plan, you know, and that's true with all. And I believe that's in relationship to the rest of your salaries. So you can lo, you know, you can go to the low end, you can lower it a little bit when you, when you come in, but at least they know it's about that.
What about the support staff around them? I mean, they're going to look at that too, right?
Are they, you mean, how much support staff will they have?
Or that would not fill yet, or that we're lacking compared to other districts that may have it?
Uh, yeah, believe me, the candidates probably scrutinize the district more, because they have more time to do that, than you will scrutinize them. But they'll, so they'll know coming in, in terms of if there're vacant positions waiting to be filled, that usually doesn't deter people. If there are very few bodies to do the work, that person knows coming in that they're going to have to do the work. And usually, they'll, very honestly, they'll ask me and say, okay, I see that they have very little, you know, central office, are they planning on, you know, hiring more, are they just vacant? And that's where I have to answer that question that says, no, that, you're it. And, you know, or, yes, there are positions that are, you know, that are posted, or, you know, or will be posted, or whatever, so--
Makes sense.
But they'll ask those questions, and very often, I'll start calling, you know, the board president, saying, okay, I've got a question, I'm not quite sure what the answer would be. Anything else for me? Okay, I will be in touch, I will get this to Kelly tonight, before I head to Grand Rapids, and I think I'm doing the reverse trip that you did, and so that hopefully it will be up tomorrow. And, or do you want me to send it to the board to approve when I finally get the writing done before I send it to her? Do that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do that tonight, and then if I get a response back from at least four, then I'm going to go with it. So, you know, if you can get it to me early, then tomorrow I will be, you know, I'll send it as soon as I can.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Marie.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting for us.
Communication for the public. That's fine.
Which gives me now a chance to apologize to Mrs. Garrison, who has a request to speak to us, and she has been waiting patiently, and I thank you for that.
Turn it off.
Turn it off.
Hot button.
Be careful, Marie.
I stayed in this building for three hours just to invite you all to the choir concert tomorrow. Tomorrow at 6 o'clock, which is Tuesday, March 11th, Rhondles High School Auditorium. So I hope to see you all there.
6 P.M.?
6 P.M.?
Yes.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. You might just give that to Tricia, right? She's staying the whole thing. You could have handed that to Tricia when you walked in at 6.
I know, and I did, I was gonna, okay.
After three and a half hours, she done forgot the rest.
All right.
Is there an admission or anything?
Okay, the next item is questions and concerns of board members. Mr. Kudrick?
You know, actually, you know, the basketball team, I went to see in Friday, boys' basketball, they did an outstanding job. Congratulations to the ladies, the Eagles and the boys, keep up the hard work, coaches, players, everybody, community. It's nice to see everybody come out for good things.
And they play tonight, I'm just trying to find out if we won or not, they played at 7 o'clock in Celine.
The girls did, right?
No, the girls, the girls play tomorrow, they play--
The boys are--
--at Ferndale. That was, we made history, that's the first regional we ever won in our high school for girls.
Okay, and the boys play tonight, I had--
The boys play tonight, the girls play tomorrow at Ferndale High School at 7 o'clock.
I don't know anybody that would be there right now, that's why.
Be where?
At the boys.
Oh, I do, I just text them.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Foles?
I just want to, um, tell Rhondles Elementary--
Yes, we did.
--uh, I had a great time at their Black American History Month, I really enjoyed the program, and I'll be back to see them again.
Good. Mrs. Kraut?
I've got a few things, I, I've been gone working another job in Flor-- that's what this red stuff is on my face, it's called sunburn, and 70 degrees and green grass you don't want to put up with. Enjoy the snow.
You're rolling bad for you, John.
But I just want to--
Oh, my God.
--my condolences to a lot of, I know I've seen some staff members with some ailments and some deaths and stuff, and it seems like that's going around lately, and, you know, and then congratulations to Mr. Kraut, he's feeling better, I take it?
Yes.
He had a little scary emergency, and he's, so our wishes to him. And they want to take your thunder from the basketball, so I'll let you say it.
We won 64 to 53, so we will play again, I'm sure, Wednesday.
This is the ladies' team?
This is the boys.
Men's one.
Okay.
Where were you, we just found that.
I know.
We'll play Wednesday.
Sorry.
I'm not sure what time, probably 7 o'clock, I would imagine. So, if you guys can, I know we got a concert tomorrow, but the girls play it--
Do you know, where was the Wednesday game at? Do you remember?
They're playing in Celine.
Celine will be the next one too, right?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Funderberg?
Yes, I have a couple of things. On Thursday, March 13th, I'm here, I only have one to three, but there's two different events. Our concert and symphony bands are competing for the Michigan School Band Association, MSBOA, that's--
Assemble, yeah.
Yeah. And so they're having a competition, and it's going to be at Belleville High School. The concert band is in the morning, and then the symphony band will be in the afternoon. I've got 1 P.M. for the symphony band, because I know my child is playing. At 2, I said 1 P.M. only because I needed to make a mental note to get there early.
You said concert band in the morning.
And they close the doors right when they, right when they play, so get there early. On March 13th, also, there is a Wayne County, Wayne County Association of School Boards, Executive Board meeting, but, and so you're welcome to come out. They're actually looking for an additional member to serve on the executive board, so if you are interested in applying for that position, you can call Wayne Risa and talk to Deborah Metzoin, and she can get you an application, either email it to you, or however you need to get it. On March 20th, they are having, it's actually, they're having a school aid budget discussion on the 20th, which is a Thursday, March 20th, at 6 P.M. at Wayne Risa, and they're actually having a special speaker come out and kind of have a discussion with the board members about school aid budget, and just kind of help us work through what we're going through as far as our debt elimination plans and that kind of thing, so--
When is that?
On March 20th at 6 P.M.
I'm Van Borne, you're right.
At Wayne Risa.
And that's at Wayne Risa on Van Borne.
Is it?
Yeah, that's it for me.
I have two things. First thing I want to announce is March 27th, from 12 P.M. to 6 P.M. is going to be our district's kindergarten roundup. It's going to be held at Corey Elementary, so you can bring your little ones that you want to register for school. They ask that you bring three proofs of residency, your ID, and your child's birth certificate for the registration process. They're going to have snacks, they're going to have activities for the kids to do, there'll be some screenings being done, and it'll give them a chance to kind of come and meet some of the staff that'll be interacting with them. So that's on March 27th from 12 P.M. to 6 P.M. at Corey. The other thing I have is, I announced it at the last meeting, that the Michigan Department of Education, Special Education Department is putting through some administrative rule changes. Right now, the public comment is being taken, and that period will end on March 13th at 5 P.M. So if you have any public comments on the proposed changes, they have to be submitted to the state by then. You can find information out on the proposed rule changes by going to the MDE, or Michigan.gov, going to MDE, and then going under the Special Education tab, and they have a whole section on what the proposed changes are, as well as videos explaining what the proposed changes are. And they, they're having to do with evaluations and eligibilities for your IEPs, due process, qualifications of teachers and personnel, such as specialized teachers for like the special ed, and then intermediate school districts, which will be Wayne Risa, their plans and delivery of their special education programs. Those are the areas that will be impacted by the changes. And I think that's all I have, so I guess we need a motion.
May the chair make a motion, we go into closed session, the exact session for student discipline.
Support. Motion made by Mr. Kudrick, supported by Ms. Funderberg. Roll call, please. Ms. Kudrick?
Yes.
Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Ms. Kraut?
Yes.
Ms. Thied?
Yes.
Ms. Funderberg?
Yes.
Ms. Barrett?
Yes.
I think both, yes. What is the time?
9:18.